Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone out this evening to our regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is just after six o'clock PM on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. So we did just conclude a workshop for the purpose of discussing the results of a feasibility study for an ag innovation center concept. Again, we thank staff and Mr. Points for coming in presenting that and giving us that information. So we'll begin this meeting with an invocation offered by Reverend Jim Porter. Appreciate you being here, Jim, for that. So if you please stand for that prayer and then remain standing afterwards for the pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. It's been another beautiful day in our city, and we thank you for that. Thank you for these men and women that lead us. Thank you, Father, for the city staff that works so hard and is so professional and always so well-prepared. We pray for the matters on the agenda this evening, Father, that they would be well-discussed, well-heard, and wise decisions would be made. Father, again, we thank you for the strong leadership of this community, and we are in their debt. Thank you for your goodness, Father. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porter. We appreciate you being here and beginning us with that prayer. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Councilman Doty?
Here.
Councilman Stoddick?
Here.
Councilor, register?
Here.
Counselor Williams?
Here.
Counselor Allgood?
Here.
Counselor Dittenberg?
Here.
Thank you so much. All city council members are present and accounted for. Are there any conflict of interest declarations from any members of the council regarding items on the agenda this evening? Okay, so we do have two special presentations this evening. The first is from our Caldwell Fire Department.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a conflict. Let me get the number here for you if I can get it. What is it? Number thirty? I was involved with the sewer connection and all the other stuff with staff, so I think I need to be reduced from that.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Okay, any other conflict of interest declarations? Okay, very good. That'll move us then into our first special presentation again from our Caldwell Fire Department. So whichever one you is designated, who drew the short straw, come on up. If you don't mind, just make sure to tell us your name and the floor is yours.
So my name is Justin Hughes. This is Captain Dan Garcia and Battalion Chief Jose Martinez. We're going to be participating in the Seattle stair climb this year. There's actually six of us. The three others are Engineers Serge Linek, firefighter Dane Everts, and firefighter Josh Maggard. If you're not familiar with the Seattle stair climb, it's obviously hosted in Seattle. It's the 34th year, I believe. They've raised over $25 million to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and basically it's the world's largest on-air stair climb. There's thousands of career volunteer, career and volunteer firefighters that come, and we just, we climb on air, full PPE, and all the money goes to blood cancer research and patient resources. The idea behind the stair climb is that every step we take is a representation of what those individuals are going through, and that's just what we're doing towards finding cures. So we've been fundraising for a couple years, or a couple months now. We've done a few different events, one being a two-day event at Albertson's, and then another one coming up on March 1st at Dutch Brothers'. We've been able to raise around $3,500 so far, and we're trying to continue that. So we just wanted to come to the city council and ask for your guys' support and interest in donating.
Very good. So what is your goal donation or amount goal?
I think our team goal is set right now at 5,000, but we could always bump that up to, you know, more and more.
Add a couple zeros at the end.
People want to donate. So we can, we, in the, in the past, we've, there's been years that we've raised $10,000, but the last few years, it's just been one or one person at a time. So it's been roughly getting around 2,000, 3,000. So this year, I kind of bumped it up a little bit to 5,000. We're getting pretty close to that. I think we're going to surpass that, so I might bump it up to that 10,000 mark.
And I think, I don't know, have you all participated in it before?
Dan and I have.
The other four, it's our first one.
This is my eighth year doing it.
Eighth year.
This is my seventh or eighth. So, yeah, we're hoping that experience is going to beat out the youth, so we'll see.
My money's on the youth, no offense. Awesome. Questions from council or? No, not at all. Yes, council register.
I'd like to give them some money. So how do we do that?
I think that'd be very appropriate to do that, and does not require a vote of the council. There is obviously the funds the council has for community outreach, employment outreach in that regard. So I'm trying to remember, do you remember how much last year was donated?
It was 500 or 1,000, I can't remember.
I think it was 1,000 last year. I think it was 500, but then somebody said, let's do, let's double it to 1,000, if I remember correct on that. So, does that sound right?
Yeah, that sounds right. And then, so this year, it's a little different. The website we went to last year, where you did that, it's no longer. So now you have to go to the city, or the Caldwell Fire Department page, and Bianca's got that linked on there, where you can go donate for the team. So it'd be a little easier. They changed it all up on us this year, or else I'd have the website for you and.
That's right. I'm sure we can find it, so.
When you go on the link, it'll have like everyone's personal name and then our Caldwell Fire Department page.
Awesome. Does that sound, Counselor Allgood?
When we make this donation, can we donate specifically to the old guys?
You know, you can. There's, there's names on there, so you can go in.
They might not remember, though, that you donated to them, so.
But I'm not sure who you're calling old.
So, yeah, so does $1,000 sound appropriate to match last year's for the council?
Awesome. Yeah, we really appreciate the support.
Yeah, definitely. And then also, I think we can help spread the words as well and try to get that out there on social and everything that we can, and come and watch you climb. So where, did you have the machine down? Were you guys climbing stairs at Albertson's? Did I see that right?
Yeah, March 1st will be what, eight to noon at Dutch Brothers?
10 to, 10 to 2 on March 1st at Dutch Brothers up on Spec Link.
We'll be there.
If they're raising money for every coffee they sell, they donate a dollar back to us.
Hey, there you go. So you can go and buy a couple coffees and watch the, watch the men and women work on the, on the stair machine.
Yeah, awesome.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming and all that you do to keep our community safe. So, thanks so much. Okay, our next special presentation is Thomas Development. Mr. Manstrek, if you could please come forward, if you don't mind just stating your name for the record, and then the time is yours.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. Tom Manstrek, Thomas Development. Our business address is 420 West Main Street in Boise. Our company has been developing housing for low and moderate income seniors and families since 1990. We have done four or five in Caldwell, I believe, something like that. And before I get into the points that I wanted to directly make, we do business in a lot of towns about the size of Caldwell and have for quite some time. We work in Montana, Idaho, Arizona, and New Mexico. And just like I'm sure in your businesses or in your lives, you can come into a town and go, they're looking at the glass as half-full, or it's stagnant, or it's draining. And I would say 20, 25 years ago, Caldwell was kind of looking at the glass as draining, and we did our first affordable housing development Mallard Cove is the name. It's over across from the Walmart. It's 30 years old now, I think, something like that, and I think it still looks pretty good. The city of Caldwell is definitely looking this direction. If you have, if somebody hadn't been here for 10 years, you wouldn't recognize downtown. You'd remember the falling in over the canal and all the things that we've seen, and the motel that fell down and everything. So I would say, good on you. And, and the good on you is the reason that the gentleman who made the presentation on ag to talk to you about ways to develop incubator space to create additional jobs, whether those are financed, public, public-private partnership, or all private. The point that I'm making from seeing lots of Caldwell-sized towns is that you're presenting, we want to get it done, and we want your business here. That's where my remarks come in. Job growth is, residential development doesn't just happen. Residential development happens when people are moving to town and when jobs are being created. A rule of thumb is that for about every five jobs created, you need one new residential development. There are many apartment complexes which have been constructed in Caldwell in the last several years, which are what I would call market rate apartment communities, which means there is no, there's no government restriction on rent, there's no government restriction on income. I'm not a big slide guy, but I've got a couple that maybe we could pull the first one up, and what I'd, oh, well, that's easy to see, isn't it? Oh. Is there a way to make that any bigger? Okay, so I'm going to do a little narrative. The rent, and I'm using the Norfolk apartment community, which we just completed over off of Chicago, which, by the way, 78 family units, and I think we leased it up in 45 days, something like that. The comparison that I would like to bring to your attention is that our rents, which are set annually by HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, range from $445 a month for a small one-bedroom to $1,252 a month for a three-bedroom. Comparing those with market rents in Caldwell for a similar development, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, our rental advantage, which means our rent is less than market, goes from $855 a month to $1,200 a month, and the lowest advantage is about $350 a month. Next slide, please. So the question is, how do we pay for that? There are federal resources that I think many of you know about, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, some loans from HUD. But what I want to show you here, the second line, the, the left column is what the capital stack looks like for Norfolk, and you'll see a permanent loan of about $9,200,000. That is totally a function of the lower rents that we charge and we're required to charge. Yes, we get tax credit equity to help fill that bucket. The permanent loan size for Norfolk is about $9,200,000. If you take those market rents, one-bedroom, 1,300, two-bedroom, 1,600, three-bedroom, 1,800, that supports a permanent loan size of almost double, $18,600,000. And those rents are not regulated. So if Caldwell adds another 10,000 people and 5,000 jobs, you can bet the demand is going to go up for not only for sale housing, but rental housing. Those rents could increase, as you've seen, probably 25 or 30% in the last couple of years. Our rents don't. Who do we rent to? Our income range is a function of family size, and for a one bed, for a one-person family, the income is 20,000 to 40,000. Two-bedroom, 23,000 to 47,000, three bed, or three, I say three persons, I'm sorry, 26,000 to 52,000. Four people, 30,000 to 58,000. Much has been said and written about cities desiring to keep first responders, police, fire, EMT. I, I suggest that cities also have a desire to keep city employees and schoolteachers living in the proximity of where they work. Let me give you some, these are on the city website and the Caldwell School District website. Starting salary for a code enforcement officer, 40,000. Custodian, 32,000. Engineering tech, 40,000. Caldwell School District teachers aid, 30,000. Certified schoolteacher, 43,000 to 60,000. With the exception of the highest-paid schoolteacher, each and every one of those city employees and each and every Caldwell School District employee in those job classifications, if they are a family of even two people, income qualify to live at an apartment community like Norfolk. These people cannot afford one-bedroom rent of $1,300, two-bedroom rent of $1,600, three-bedroom rent of $1,800. I'm not here tonight to talk about the federal resources or the state resources, which are very, very, let me repeat, very minimal. What, what can cities do to, to help provide some economic stimulus to fill this gap, this $9 million gap between the permanent loan size and an affordable community and the permanent loan size as a market community? Cities can waive all fees, building impact, water, sewer. Those are policy decisions. Let me, and I've not seen this in Idaho, but I see no reason why this couldn't happen. You, you could and should say, well, Mr. Manstrek, we waive all your fees. What happens if you decide to not rent to income-qualified people? With your business in New Mexico, the city of Albuquerque, and I'll just make the number up. Let's say our fees for Norfolk were $200,000. The city agrees to waive those so long as we continue the rent and income restrictions for a period of 40 years. If we don't do that, there's a promissory note signed, there's a deed of trust on the property, and we pay the full amount of the fees. So it's, it's not a gift, it's a commitment. If you do what you say you're going to do, we are willing to help you in that regard. The city has home money, granted, not a great, not a great deal, but this is a business of kind of inches. There are two agenda items tonight for granting CDBG, Community Development Block Grant money. Both of those resources are very frequently used by cities and by counties to help support affordable housing. The presentation on the ag facility, cities very frequent, we frequently will either give land or, or lease land for a dollar a year for 50 years to a developer to help that development cost. We paid almost $900,000 for the Norfolk land, which is about $12,000 a unit. It would have been extremely helpful to have that number be smaller. Off-site infrastructure, most apartment developments require some level of off-site infrastructure that, of course, has, has a direct benefit for that community, but it also has a public benefit. So, so some cities, many cities, will pay for all of the off-site infrastructure. Some cities will, will, in either a general obligation bond, or when you're putting your capital stack together for a fiscal year, you may be issuing tax-exempt bonds, using a portion of those tax-exempt bond proceeds to help subsidize the development of the affordable housing, again, with the same deed of trust and restriction on the development and on the developer. If you don't maintain your income and rent restrictions for a period of 40 years, pay us now. So my purpose tonight was not to go through a detailed slideshow presentation, but to say, good on the city of Caldwell for what you've done the last 10 or 20 years. The velocity is going this direction. We would very much like to develop again in Caldwell. As I said, Norfolk, 78 units filled up in 45 days. The demand for nice rental housing in this 20 to $58,000 income range is, is prodigious, and it's not likely to go down. Many of your employees, many of the School District employees can afford to live and income-qualify to live in these properties that lets them live, live close to where they work, which I suggest is a significant community benefit. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments from any council members? Okay, very, very good.
Wow. I've heard everything you wanted to know in 10 minutes, which took me 35 years to learn. Happy to come back or provide supplemental information on a kind of an ad hoc basis. It's a very esoteric component of housing, but to provide this housing for the people that I've described, these conversations with cities are very necessary.
Maybe one quick question, Tom?
Yes, certainly.
Just the 70, how many units?
78.
And they filled in 45 days? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that common these days to fill that? That just seems incredibly fast.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is an indication of the demand there is out there for city employees, for the people who work in the grocery stores, for the teller at the bank. I mean, think of all of the service people that we all encounter each and every day. Almost all of those people income-qualify for what we do. Mr. Mayor, we're finishing a, a larger apartment community, 137 units in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And the Albuquerque market is really very similar to the, the Treasure Valley, the Ada County, Canyon County metro. It's about the same size. There's a lot of ag, et cetera, et cetera. We, we will be delivering the first units on that community in about three weeks. 60 of the 137 units will be filled within a week. So our experience with Norfolk and Caldwell is exactly the experience we see elsewhere, and it's an indication of this housing crisis, which we all know exists. The, the Treasure Valley is one of the least affordable single-family home-buying areas in the country. There are lots of reasons for that. But the demand for what we do to rent to people who work for the cities of Caldwell is prodigious. So 45 days is not unusual.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Appreciate you being here. Okay, that moves us into our audience participation. Jim Moore had signed up to address the council regarding zoning, and just again would ask that, or is required that in order to speak on this cannot be an item that's on the agenda this evening. So just make sure we don't dive into anything with the comprehensive plan that's going to be discussed by the council. But Mr. Moore, you had indicated to speak on, no, okay, very good. Travis Manning, and if you could just state, what's that?
I decided not to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Travis. And then we did have one other signed up, Vinjan Brahim-Lori, but it indicated it was for the comprehensive plan. And again, that is going to be on the agenda this evening. So we'll not be able to, if that was the only, if there was other issues you wanted to address, you could, but since that is on the agenda, we'll not be able to address that during those comments. Is that, I saw you look up when I said the name. I'm sure totally wrong. I apologize. But I believe the council is going to take testimony specific to what was discussed last week for some of those changes. So you will have that chance at that time to speak at that. Okay, that concludes audience participation. Moves us into some amendments before we do get to the consent calendar. Counselor Doty?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to remove items five and six from the consent calendar and move items 14 and 15 to new business for further discussion.
Very good. Any other, or any, do we have a second to that motion? So that's a motion from Counselor Doty and a second from Counselor Dittenberg to amend the consent calendar as noted. All who's in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as amended?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Some motion from Counselor Doty and a second from Counselor Stoddick in regards to approval of the consent calendar as amended. Any discussion on that motion? With that, then the voting is coming, open, frozen.
We'll do a voice vote.
We can do a voice vote. Yep, it's no problem at all. Madam Clerk?
Doty?
Yes.
Register?
Yes.
Stoddick?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Allgood?
Yes.
Dittenberg?
Yes.
Very good. So that passes unanimously. That moves us into old business. So we do have, as those will remember, we did have So we do have, as those will remember, we did have the continuation of the comprehensive plan from our special city council meeting that was held a week ago today. So I see some familiar faces that were at that meeting, so I appreciate you coming back for that. So in regards to this, we're going to try to do this the right way. Do you want to recognize, by the way, we haven't done that yet tonight, our new city attorney that is here with us, Mr. Oscar Claus? Did I get the last name right that time?
Yeah.
I'm doing better, I'm doing better. So I appreciate him being here on that. I know that as we are transitioning, we'll have kind of dual hats on that, so I know Taylor from, or Hawes, Hamilton, something Sable, I think is on their way here as well, so working together in tandem, we appreciate that, but want to recognize him. So I'm going to try to do this correctly, put me in line if I'm not. So at our last council meeting, that was discussed, the public testimony portion of this hearing was closed. However, there was some additional insights that were requested and given in regards to this specific...
This is a non-public hearing. This is the bill and ordinance. It's a downtown parking.
Okay, so number one, I apologize, so I'm getting ahead of myself. So this is, first of all, the Downtown Parking Advisory Board, so Robin, and then we'll get into what I was just talking about.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe it was at the last council meeting, we continued this so that we could go back and make some changes to the ordinance to limit this to a two-year term. So we've done that under expiration. We've changed the language to say the advisory board shall be active and perform the duties as specified in this article for a period of two years from the effective date of this ordinance. The board will sunset on February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-seven, that's if it's approved tonight, unless reestablished or extended by formal action of the city council. And so I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Very good, thank you so much. Any questions in regards to that amendment or that change to that ordinance?
Ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, all sponsor bill number five, ordinance number thirty-six fifty-seven, move for its passage by title only and approve the summary for publication.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's a motion from Council Doughty and a second from Council Stoddick for passage of bill number five, ordinance number thirty-six fifty-seven. Any discussion regarding that motion?
Okay.
Okay, with that, is the computer working or is it still being honorary?
No, it's frozen up.
Being honorary, okay. Going to earn your money tonight, Debbie.
Okay. Doughty?
Yes.
Stoddick?
Yes.
Register?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
All good?
Yes.
Dittenberg?
Yes.
Very good, so that motion passes unanimously. Now, that does move us into item number two, which I, what I was discussing earlier. So again, we thank everyone for coming back this evening. As you remember, this public hearing, so the public testimony was closed on this public hearing at the last meeting, however, there was discussion that came up regarding some specific areas, to look at those a little bit more in detail, ensure they're at their proper place, to meet with some of the, especially the business owners I know that were here last time, they had some concerns in that regard. So I believe to do this correctly, we do need a reopen public testimony, specifically however, so this doesn't, did allow anyone who wants to speak on these specific items, but not on the plan in its entirety, but just on specifically what was noted for these changes. Does that sound correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, if council is amenable to that, for a motion to reopen public testimony specific to these new items that will be listed by staff tonight.
Mr. Mayor, can you, do we know what the specific items are? I know one for sure, that biggest one, were there more than one? Just the one?
Do you want to, do you mind highlighting just that real quick? Then before, don't go through your whole slide, but just what these, the specific items would be that could be discussed.
Of course. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Morgan B. Saw, Planning and Zoning. As was mentioned, this is a continuation of the comprehensive plan presentation from last week. At that meeting, staff was directed to come back and reevaluate the area along Simplot and to change the map, the future land use map, which is in front of you this evening, specifically the area circled in red. That was previously identified as a mixed-use place type, and in the revised map, it is identified as an employment center place type. And so that is the only change that we made over this last week at council's direction, but I am here for any questions you may have.
Okay, so that would be what that testimony be limited to?
I'm going to try and make this motion specific to that. I know if we refer to the map, that doesn't do very good for notes, but I guess it'd be the Simplot area, is that what we're calling it? So I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing specifically for what's indicated on the map that's currently showing or been referenced as the Simplot area.
Second.
So we have a motion from Council Doughty, the second from Council Dittenberg. This is to reopen the public testimony portion of this hearing specific to these amendments that are going to be presented by staff this evening. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion passes. Very good, so we will move forward with staff's presentation in this regards, and then go through those that wish to, again, speak on this matter specific to these changes that'll be presented by staff this evening.
I do not have much more of a staff presentation, other than this was the change made to the map. Mixed use, the pink designation previously would have allowed a little bit of mixed-use development, so a little bit of residential with commercial, but a much stronger focus on commercial, whereas the purple employment center place type is focused more on light and medium industry. And so that is the change.
Very good, it's short and simple.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Questions for staff at this time? No? Okay, very good. Were you able to, and I know, I saw Mr. Kirkham, I believe, walk in, were you able to meet with Mr. Kirkham, some of the other business owners in that area?
We did email back and forth and showed him the map, and he did not bring up any comments or concerns to me.
Okay, very good, and so this does encompass that there is a residential neighborhood in there, I know, but I think in looking at the entire area, the future of that area most likely is industrial in nature, and so includes those areas, correct?
The majority of that space that is annexed into the city already is zoned M1, light industrial. There is a small neighborhood existing over there that is zoned TN, traditional neighborhood, and this new place type does go over the top of that, but it does not rezone that property, so that property would continue to be TN until such time as it redeveloped, and then they would have the opportunity to choose any of the compatible zones with the employment center place type.
Very good, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, because I know we talk about grandfather non-conforming uses, that residential would not fall in that with a comp plan layer, ensuring it is industrial, it's because the zoning is still correct for those uses. Would that be an accurate statement?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, so we will, again, the public testimony has been reopened, specific to this area that was shown on the map, essentially from Painter over to Farmway, if I'm not mistaken, kind of that Simplot area, change for that. So we would ask if there's, I don't know if we just go, I don't think we need to go through all of these, but if there's anybody here that was at the last meeting that would like to come and address the council in regards to these changes, any thoughts in that regards? If you don't mind, just raise your hand or just come on forward. George, yes, please come forward, and if you could state your name and address for the record, and then the floor is yours.
George Kirkham, three zero one warehouse is our property, and my only comment is, thanks for listening, and I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Very good, thank you so much. Any questions, Council Stoddick?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kirkham, what about the boundary for Wagner and Farmway? Would you still rather see that Farmway?
Am I allowed to speak to that?
No.
No, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, though.
Very good, thank you, George, appreciate you coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that it?
So is any, any other discussion in regards, again, specific to that area that anyone would like to address? Okay, I do not see any, so.
Motion to close the public hearing.
In a second?
Second.
It's a motion from Council Doughty and a second from Council Stoddick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So with that, this item is before council for your deliberation against staff, is available for any questions that you may have in that regards, and then any discussion among council. Councilor, register.
Yes, thank you. So I am going to have questions for staff. I don't know, would it be, would one of you be able to come over here so the camera can pick you up for the people at home? Is that okay? Well, she's moving over here, just to make it easier. So I had a meeting recently with Robin and Morgan, and it was a very informative meeting, so no matter how, well, I have, I have a couple holdups still, but what we did talk about were questions that the community had, and we wanted to be able to answer those and clear up any misconceptions or things that were kind of going on with that. So the first one that we talked about was that the current comp plan has our boundary out to Chicken Dinner, and now it's being pulled back to Wagner. And so...
Yeah, can you pull the presentation back up? We came prepared for these questions.
Yes, because we did, we did have a really nice, informative meeting, but I guess the question is if we can, it's one of the things that I think I'm held up on, is if we can pull it back to Wagner, why can't we pull it back to Farmway?
So we went ahead and did a side-by-side, Mayor and Council. The one on your left is the existing comprehensive plan. As you can see in the red circle, our planning boundary already goes past Wagner to Chicken Dinner. The county accepted that back in two thousand fifteen, I believe is what I looked up, two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen. That boundary of our impact area, and then with the new comp plan that was adopted, they accepted this planning boundary. With the proposed comp plan, we're proposing on the right to pull back the planning boundary to Wagner, which in essence would free up five thousand acres that would go back to the county for agricultural land. We cannot pull back to Farmway, even if we wanted to, because we have three, I believe four subdivisions that have already been annexed into the city and given entitlements that are between Farmway and Wagner, and for them to be annexed into the city, it has to statutorily be within our planning boundary, and they have entitlements, so they have a legal contract that we've given them the permission to build, so we can only pull back as far as Wagner.
Okay, and then we talked about giving a little bit more of an explanation on the bonus density, and do we even have to have that?
Sure, so the bonus density program, and let me, I think I, we think we left this slide in there as well. So on most of the comp plan designations, as you can see, we are proposing a reduction in the densities, with the exception of Neighborhood One and Neighborhood Two, which impacts your RS One, RS Two, R One, and R Two zoning designations. After discussion with the public and hearing public feedback, talking with council members, we as staff have decided that when we move forward with proposed ordinance amendments, we will not be proposing a bonus density increase for the R One zone. That will have to remain, if this plan gets adopted, that will remain at eight dwelling units per acre. So the adoption, if you were to adopt this tonight, it only adopts whatever that proposed allowed maximum density is in the purple. It does not do the reddish colored, the density bonus program, because we don't have one. We don't have one codified. So for any density bonuses to be given, we would have to write ordinances, they would have to go before Planning and Zoning Commission, and they would have to come to city council for approval. If they don't get approved, then there is no bonus densities, ever. With that bonus density, what we are trying to do is currently, people could come in with a plan unit development and request a density increase, and we're really not getting anything in return for that, except maybe some additional open space. With this bonus density increase, what staff would be proposing is more stringent criteria that they would have to meet, like dedication of land for police and fire stations, dedication of land for parks, a certain number of housing units that are actually deed restricted with affordable rents or sales prices, or a certain type of housing units that we want to see in that development, that we need and want to see. But again, the comp plan, it has nothing to do with the density bonuses, it's just a recommendation that we do a program. So if you were to adopt this tonight, it would only be the proposed allowed maximum density in the purple. And as you can see, there's only an increase in one area, and that's in the Neighborhood Two, and that's because it combines R One zoning and R Two zoning. So currently, in an R One zone, you can do six dwelling units per acre, so this would allow them to do two more dwelling units per acre, but in hindsight, in an R Two zone, today's code, they can do twelve dwelling units per acre, this would restrict them to doing eight. So it's actually a reduction in the R Two zone. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, but that is going to be, so this, I think the density is going to be the thing that holds me up, and I'll tell you why. So if we're looking at the low-density residential, it's six dwelling units an acre, and it's going up to eight, and then we talked about how the code says that the lots have to be eight thousand square feet, so mathematically, on an acre, they could not do eight dwellings if the code stayed at eight thousand square foot lots.
That is true.
Right.
That is true.
So what my concern is with this, and it has nothing to do with the comp plan, because I think you guys have done a really great job, my concern with this is that eventually somebody's going to come forward and say, hey, we need to make the code match the comp plan. So one has to change, right? Either we have to say that lots can be six thousand square feet to match the comp plan in here, or we have to fix the eight dwelling back to six to make it fit, right?
Mayor and Council Register, not quite. So with a comp plan, a comp plan could say eight dwelling units per acre, but again, it's a guide, so if in your code, you say we want eight thousand square foot lots, you're just, you're going to have, because the minimum, it's, that's the maximum, eight dwelling units per acre, so you can do less. So if you have eight thousand square feet lots, and you're going to end up with less density, you're still in compliance with your comp plan because you're less than eight dwelling units.
I can just see the argument coming up, that why do we have one that says one thing and one that says another thing if it's not possible to do? And the concern being is that eventually, like I said, they're going to want them to match, but also, basically, so for me, I don't want to be asked later to change a zone and then have somebody say, well, you voted for the comp plan, so now you're sort of obligated to change this code, otherwise it's kind of hypocritical. So that's the one thing that's kind of holding me up, are the codes that are coming. Other than that, I think you guys have done a really nice job on this, and I, when we talked, I can see your vision, I think that it's very professionally done, and I really like some of the changes that you're making, but that, those are, I'm just trying to be forward-thinking with the codes that are going to come, so that, so if, if we had maybe the codes with this, it might be a little bit easier to kind of wrap brains around that, but it makes me a little bit nervous when we don't know what the code changes are going to be yet. And then the other thing, too, was the administrative reviews versus the things that are coming to council, so I don't know if you were prepared for that, but I'm going to have it here in my notes, but what kind of things would be coming to an administrative review instead of coming to council that are actually coming to council now? Because we talked about not wanting to give up some of the council input when it came to certain things.
Correct, and I, there's nothing that we would be giving up that would have administrative review that was typically coming to council. I think it was small things, like landscaping businesses, instead of, I think those were, instead of being an SUP with the hearing examiner, maybe those become an administrative review. Everything else that we're looking at proposing, and again, this is completely separate from the comp plan, because the codes have nothing to do with the comp plan right now, the things we're proposing is actually going to be more stringent. We're proposing like storage units, for instance, to have an SUP at the council level. We're proposing multifamily, which typically would have an SUP at the hearing examiner level to have an SUP at council level, and that's based on the feedback we've received from council. So if anything, I believe we're ending up more stringent in a lot of our codes, and then a little bit more flexible in areas that shouldn't necessarily... then a little bit more flexible in areas that shouldn't necessarily be a concern, like for instance, a bank. You know, a lot of our codes say an SUP for a bank and it's like, you know, a bank is a really low intensity use, so that should probably be just a permitted use in some zones. And so we are going to be proposing some changes like that that just kind of make more sense.
But we did talk about also having some codes so that we weren't overrun by banks and doctors' offices and stuff like that, so that if used to contend was, I think it was called a community center, that it wasn't all doctors' offices, right?
Sure, and we can do that through the codes. Those would, how you do that is you would do those through the SUP process. So if, kind of the survey that I sent out, if there are certain land use types that council is concerned with, we, staff would like to know about that because as we're looking at our land use schedules, we can make certain land uses a special use permit so that you can look at how it fits in with the neighborhood. How many do we have, you know, do we have, you know, 10 dentist offices on the same block? So I think those things can be accomplished through that process.
Okay. So I think, we also talked a little bit about, you know, that a lot of what we're seeing in Caldwell right now is a result of prior decisions made 40 years ago, not necessarily decisions that were made five years ago when we're still kind of trying to catch up with it and what's going to make the most sense, which is why this came up in the first place, right? So, again, I think you guys are doing a really nice job on that. And, oh, I know, one thing that we wanted to confirm was that Verbena Ranch, when that was denied for dense, like I think that was kind of the big concern was the density and that kind of thing, that that would have not been automatically approved under this comp plan.
That is correct. They would not have been because they still have a subdivision plot and they still have an annexation that would have to come before council.
Okay, but their smaller lot sizes would still not have worked under this comp plan?
That is correct, not in an R1 zone, that is correct.
All right. And then. I think that was, I think at the, during council comments, I was going to talk about the checklist that we talked about a little bit, probably not appropriate right now. And, you know, I just, I've, I've struggled and struggled and struggled with this density thing and how it affects the codes and I think that's just the one thing that's really holding me back, but I really do think you guys needed, did a nice job. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Denver.
Mr. Mayor, Robin, thank you very much for all the work that you did for this and for your staff. You guys did a great job and, and I apologize for putting you through the wringer with regards to this because I know you want something done more expeditiously than, than slowly, but thanks for bearing with us through this process. And I'm willing to make the motion right now that we approve resolution number 63-25 to repeal and replace the comprehensive plan for the city of Caldwell.
Very good. So we do have a motion for approval of the comprehensive plan. And again, so this would be repealing the old one and replacing it with the one that's been presented. Do we have a second to that motion? So a motion from Counselor Denver and a second from Counselor Doty, discussion on that motion? Counselor Stoddick?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a comment, and it's no reflection on what our folks did on, on planning and zoning because they put a lot of time and effort into it, but you know, this is what happens when you allow some small divisions encroach into ag ground, like the Chickasaw project for instance. It's just chips away at quarter acres, circles and all that. Some of you folks have voted for that, you, your platform was to save ag ground when in fact, that's not the case. And I would argue the same thing with the county commissioners because I've talked to them about this too. Because like I say, Farmway should have been the borderline for that and we could have went north and south, but I just want to remind everybody that when we do things like this and we allow these, these smaller subdivisions going to ag ground, some comments are made they have the right to sell their ground, sure they do, but at, at what impact does it, does it have on the ag ground around it? The seed companies, the french fry companies, the beef companies, it has a large effect and for those folks, I just want to remind you, ag is a big part of our economy here in Caldwell and we have to keep that in mind, but I just, I just can't support it because of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, appreciate that. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Staff, I want to thank you as well and I think it's noteworthy that I was contacted by an individual I know who's been a planner in four different states. And this individual told me this is the best comp plan they've ever seen. And so congratulations on all your hard work and, and someone who has walked in your shoes looking at this is pretty excited about it. I, I think it's important too, for the people that have contacted me personally, I've been glad to visit with them and let them know this is a state law, right? We must have a comp plan and it must be revisited every 10 years, is it, by, by law? Anyway, there's a, there's a time limit, you don't have to answer, but it has to be updated and, and a comp plan is visionary. It, it is intended to be looking forward further than the immediate future and so just kudos again and thank you for your helping me understand when I had questions and was able to come in and clear things up because I was quite concerned. Mr. Mayor, I think the big question is the codes and a lot of people have struggled to understand how this isn't approving any codes, that nothing changes tomorrow code wise if we approve this today. And so I know I have some concerns about those codes as well and so I would love it if we could do an early workshop so that if we needed a second workshop, we had time to do that rather than doing it too close to when staff wants us to approve codes, then we feel rushed, then we feel pressured. And if there's a way we could schedule a workshop sooner than later, and if it ends up being too much, if we have more questions or we have concerns, we still would have time to revisit that before staff wants to approve that and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other discussion? Okay, so again, the motion is for approval of the comp plan, again repealing the old plan and replacing it with the plan that was presented. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
I think we're at maybe just a minute.
Oh, are we up?
Oh, this, he's almost there, Mayor.
I was having technical issues earlier too, so it's not, it's not just you, my computer wasn't working either. Should we go ahead with the roll call? Oh, there we go, okay, we got it. So with that, the voting is open at this time? And all votes are cast, so voting is closed. And that motion passes with four in favor and two in opposition. So Counselor Stoddick and Counselor Register voted in the negative with the other four council members voting positive. And that does again pass four to two. So I stand for motion to close this public hearing. In a second? The motion from Counselor Stoddick and second by Counselor Doty, all is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And the opposed, and that motion passes. So that moves this into new business and the first item on new business is a quasi-judicial matter for an annexation and a SPP. What is SPP? Stand for, we'll find out. Okay, so with that, Katie, looks like you're doing the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Katie Wright, Associate Planner, 205 South Sixth Avenue. Before you tonight is Element Ridge subdivision, ANN 2413 and SPP 2402. It went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 8th where they did recommend denial. The project location is a 74.41 acre parcel located on the northwest corner of 10th Avenue and David Street. This site will have frontage along 10th Avenue to the east, David Street to the south, Moss Street to the north and Bear Lane to the west. The project sites currently surrounded by agricultural Canyon County land to the north and west, Valley View Middle School to the east and Residential to the south. There are four developments within a mile radius of the subject site that are either actively under construction or have been approved, have approved entitlements. Chickasaw located to the west of the sites, residential development approved for 400 single family homes. Arrow Rock Farms located east of the site is a mixed use development approved for 60 townhomes and 40 single family homes and two commercial lots. And the Cedars is located east of the site, is a residential development approved for 221 townhomes. And Carter Commons located to the east of the site is a mixed use development approved for 196 Plex units, 336 multifamily units and 20 commercial lots. The applications before you tonight are for an annexation of 74.41 acres of land into the Caldwell city limits with the initial zone of R1 and a preliminary plot for a subdivision. Tonight's request consists of the applicant's proposal for an annexation with low density residential zoning designation. The purpose of the R1 low density residential zone is to provide areas by zoning procedures in accordance with the comprehensive plan that have preserved and enhanced single family residential neighborhoods at a low density standard, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Such zones should have a full range of urban services available or projected to be established. The proposed development is surrounded by county ag land and low density residential in all directions. There's also some medium and high density residential scattered to the east along with highway corridor along Carter Road. Staff finds the low density residential zone is compatible zoning district next to other low density residential and county land. The comp plan designation and development is low density residential and is consistent with the intent of the comp plan and the proposed densities are in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed land use of single family residential is permitted land use within the zoning district. The applicant is proposing a development consisting of 215 single family home lots with 5.86 acres of qualifying open space. The proposed development project has been analyzed for compliance with city codes and policies and staff finds the proposed development is in compliance with all parking and landscaping requirements, all bulk standards for lot size setbacks, frontage and height of buildings, and the proposed development is in compliance with all zoning and subdivision ordinances. The proposed development will have adequate site access and all utilities are available or will be available as outlined in the engineering staff report. Public agencies were notified and asked to provide comments, the only agencies that had concerns, Highway District Four provided comments for the council to consider and Valley View School District stated they currently have capacity for this development but are planning to be over capacity by 2029. And staff received 13 public comments, all of these public comments were in opposition due to traffic, lack of infrastructure in the area and density. On January 8th, the request for the annexation and preliminary plot went before Planning and Zoning Commission and they did recommend denial due to believing that the application was too dependent on other applications and there were a lack of resources available in the area. And staff recommends that if the council approves the request, that such request is subject to the conditions as specified in the findings of facts, conclusions of law and order of decision. And I stand for questions.
Thank you so much, Katie, appreciate that. Counselor Register?
Hello.
Hi.
So you brought it up, so I'm going to ask, is this dependent on Verbena?
Mayor and Counselor, staff's understanding at this time is no, it is not. I know there was conversation about some engineering issues that the commission may have thought it was more reliant than it actually was. They, they can function on their own. Haley may be able to talk more on that if you, if you have more questions about it.
Well, I, I don't need to take up a lot of time with it. I believe that the two are intertwined and they, they need each other, that's kind of what. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission have reasons for feeling like that, so we'll just assume that there's an argument to that. I, of course, I worry about the lack of resources with the water issues we're having as well and all that kind of stuff, but we don't need to take a lot of time on that, we can go to public comment.
Mayor and Counselor, that will also be addressed in the applicant's presentation about water and things like that as well.
Okay, thank you so much. At least at this time, that's all the questions for you. Maybe more later though, so be prepared. Okay, so we are going to get into a public testimony portion of this. So we do, we do have a number of people that are signed up, so we will adhere tightly to the 10 minute and three minute mark, so if you do hit to the end of your time, we'll allow you for 10 seconds to wrap up your last comment and then at that time, at that time, I'd ask you to, to stop talking so we can get on to the next. So our first are those that are in favor. Becky, if you'd please come forward and if you'd state your name and address for the record, then you will have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Thank you. Becky Isigiri, 1144 South Silverstone Way, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. All right. So good evening, I'm here to present Element Ridge subdivision. The project is located west and, west of 10th between Home Dale and Carter. Valley View Middle School, Falcon Ridge Elementary School and Jim City Academy are directly east of the site. We also have county property to the nor, or to the south and the toll development to the north. The comprehensive plan and future land use map designate this area as low density residential. We're proposing a gross density of 2.89 dwelling units per acre, which is under the max of three dwelling units per acre. As you can see, the project is located well within the area of impact, meaning that the city's schools and, and EMS should have accounted for this growth. The sub, the subdivision has been designed as a low density residential development with a zoning designation of R1 and a gross density of 2.89 dwelling units per acre. The 74 acre development will include 215 single family lots and 33 common lots. The minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet with an average lot size of 8,638 square feet and a max lot size of 11,956 square feet. We are also proposing, we're also providing a city wa, a two acre water storage tank lot on the, on the south side of the, the property. Element Ridge will be fully developed in six phases. It's very important to remember that each phase will take about two years to complete, that's 12 years until we reach full build out. If this development is approved, in the next few years, this area will see 48 new lots and roadway improvements to 10th and David. A couple of years from 2028, this area will see 50 more lots and so on. This development will not bring 215 plus cars and people to the area at once, its impact will be phased over 12 years. Here are the renderings for Element Ridge. We're proposing one and two story homes. These homes will have multiple material types, porches, popouts, providing visual interest to the exteriors of each homes. And here are the interiors. The total qualifying open space for Element Ridge is 7.9% or 5.86 acres with an overall open space of 12 acres. The amenities for this development include a network of major micro pathways that will provide strong connectivity throughout the subdivision. This development will also include sports courts, picnic areas and bench seating. As I mentioned earlier, this project will provide the city with a two acre lot to accommodate a municipal water storage tank. This, the city has identified this location as optimal due to the topography of the project site. A portion of the tank will be buried underground with only 16 feet of the tank above ground. The tank will connect to existing infrastructure in pressure zone two near Home Dale and be backfed with that connection. No well is planned for this site. This development will construct 13 new local roads and two new collector streets with full access to 10th, Bear Lane, Moss and David. All new local streets will include curb, gutter and a five foot attached sidewalk. David Street will see full frontage improvements, including a five foot detached meandering sidewalk and a left turn lane for northbound traffic onto 10th. 10th will see full frontage improvements, including a 20 foot landscape buffer, a seven foot attached sidewalk and an eight foot parkway strip. We'll also add a high visibility pedestrian crossing with warning features at the existing school crossing. This project will also construct the half sections of Bear Lane and Moss with a five foot detached sidewalk and a seven foot parkway strip and curb and gutter. In addition to all these improvements, we're required to pay a traffic impact fee of 900 hundred thousand dollars. Um, the utilities for this development include connecting to a sixteen inch water main in Tenth Avenue. For sewer, we plan to construct a sewer lift station until we can connect to gravity sewer in Moss. For irrigation, this development will construct a new pressurized irrigation pump station. Um, and all storm water will be retained on site by using multiple retention facilities throughout the development. In conclusion, this project meets the R1 zone and comprehensive plan requirements. It's in the area of impact and adjacent to city property. This project provides um a two acre site um for municipal water tank, significant roadway improvements and will contribute nine hundred thousand dollars um in impact fees. We designed this project to benefit both the city and the community. Thanks, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Um, councilor Stodick.
Mr. Mayor, uh, on the not apart squares you've got there, uh, the one that's just north of David there, about halfway, is that an existing home?
Yes, they both are.
And they're not gonna sell to you, right? I mean.
No.
So the next one to the east of that is what? I know it's farm ground, but what, I mean, who, who owns that?
I, I'm sure, it's just like an individual that owns that.
Okay. And the one up in the uh, be the northeast corner there?
Um, so, yeah.
That's part of the farm ground that's owned by the not apart on the David Street, right? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Doughty.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is the time or, or for Mr. McDonald that's been waiting for this all night, but I'd like to hear more about the water tank and is that enough water storage to supplement and whatever we need to hear about that.
Would that be Haley or whoever?
Whoever wants to. Is it Haley or is it Rob? Either one.
Per- yeah, do you mind going up? Becky, do you mind, Rob, just?
I'm gonna have a question for her.
Yeah, so don't go far, so, or Rob if you could. Are you?
Is she okay?
Yeah.
Hope for your seat.
Start back up again. We appreciate your patience on that. Obviously, everyone's safety is of the utmost importance at any of these meetings that we have. So we appreciate your patience and understanding in that regards. So we will continue. Mr. McDonald? I just lost my computer again. So if you don't mind, the question was in regards to the water.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I always appreciate the opportunity to come up and explain anything on our public work system to help the public understand what's going on. We have, as Council knows, over the last year, we completed a Water Master Plan. And as part of that plan, there is a large, what is recommended to be a three million gallon water tank, storage tank, that is supposed to be implemented and constructed to serve Zone Two. And so, as we looked at this, it has to be at a very specific elevation so that the, basically, the the static pressure of the water matches the pressure that's down in Zone Two. And so, we looked, we've been looking for a location for quite a while, in fact, and worked with some of the other property owners up there, unable to find a spot that is at the exact correct location, or I should say, the correct elevation in that area. And then when this development came in, we were very grateful to have an offer from the property owner here to donate the two acres for this water tank. And so, we worked with him on this. In addition to that, the owner, or the owner who is actually here tonight, is also the same owner that's doing the Carter Commons, and he's been working with us also to donate the well site out there, to help Zone Three in general and Zone Four with the water situation. The water tank is a three million gallon tank proposed. It is 160 feet diameter, 20 feet tall, but it will be inset in the ground, so the expected height from the outside is only supposed to be about 16, 16 and a half feet is what our consultant told us. So there may be a little, you know, fluctuation there. The water tank, the purpose of the water tank is to buffer all of your wells so that during the peak times of the day and the low times, your wells not ramping way up and sucking the ground dry and then ramping way down. The tank helps basically equalize that so that your wells don't have to work quite as hard during the peak times. Does that answer your question, Councilman Doherty?
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up. So it's always been in the plan, or at least recently, or how, how long has that been subject in the plan, I guess would be the question?
We have, we have been aware, we knew that it was needed before the plan was completed, the master plan. And so, I've, I know that I've been working on this for two years, and I'd been working with the Seventh Day Adventist Properties, and, and we had been exploring many different areas, and then this is the area that worked out.
Just one more, Mr. Mayor. So, so we didn't put it in for any subdivision or developer specifically? It's already, it's in the plan?
No, it is in the plan, and it is a very regional improvement. It's not benefiting a single subdivision or anything like that.
Okay. Counselor Stodick?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Rob, help me understand who's going to pay for the water tower and all the infrastructure? Is that going to be the city then, or the developer, or who pays for that?
That is a very good question, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stodick. So the city has, and I know this, this kind of goes along with some of the questions you had also. So the city has user rates, user fees for water, that everybody in the city pays. And then the city also has connection fees for new development. The user rates, the user fees for the water system go primarily toward operation and maintenance of the existing system. And then the connection fees from new development go specifically toward expansion and, and new, new water mains or anything to that nature that have to help with the expansion of the new growth. The, the way that, the way that we're set up now, of course, is as this development comes in, and I ran some numbers earlier today, this development is 215 buildable units, I believe. And so, their water connection fee that would go directly toward these, these master plan items is close to a half a million dollars. And so, when they connect each house, they pay a water connection fee. And then that, those water connection fees go toward this new infrastructure that helps accommodate the growth that the city is experiencing.
Okay. Now, when you mentioned towards, that means that the whole thing isn't paid for by the fees then, right? The rest of the taxpayers have to pay for part of that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stodick, when you, when you talk about the whole thing, are you talking about the, the water?
Water tower and everything that's connected to it, yeah.
And that's a very good question, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Stodick, the water tank benefits a very large part of the city. And so, all of the connection fees that are going on in many other developments are all going to go to pay for the, that water tank. All of the capital projects we have in the water department are all funded by connection fees. That's, that's how they're funded. They're not funded by taxpayers. The water department is an enterprise fund. It does not receive any taxpayer funds. It all, it only receives the user fees, and that goes to the operation and maintenance, and then all of the connection fees go to the capital improvements.
All I'm concerned about is that we come up neutral after all the fees are set and the thing is built, and, and, you know, the taxpayers don't have to pay some extra just because that subdivision was built, which I don't think was fair. That's, that's what I'm trying to get at. So we're going to be in a neutral position, in your opinion, then, after everything is in?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stodick, our goal is to keep the connection fees at the, at the level we need them at so that as the city builds out the new development that's paying connection fees can pay for all the capital improvements. It's, it's very similar to the transportation impact fee. You want the impact fees to be at the right level so that they can cover the growth that is going on in the city from the transportation side.
Good answer.
Counselor Register?
I don't have a question for you. I have a question for our city attorney, and then for the developer. So, however, that wants to happen. Just quickly, we had asked Mr. Hilty when Verbena came up here about the Supreme Court decision that happened in Boise about denials at planning and zoning and then coming to council. And he said that he didn't think it applied to us, so I just wanted to make sure you had the same opinion, if you know what I'm talking about.
And I can kind of add to that, too. So, and my understanding is, is Boise City Code required that. So it wasn't a state code, it was an additional code that Boise City had that said if this happens at the planning and zoning, it must take, and I can't remember what it is exactly, but our code does not have that. It wasn't a state code, it was Boise City Code that required that. And then that was appealed to the State Supreme Court, is my understanding. So that was, Mr. Hilty's interpretation is it doesn't apply here because we don't have that code. It was specific just to the city of Boise.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Register, I would agree with that, and I would agree with the, the advice that was provided by, by Mr. Hilty that, that that particular problem was, was to the city of Boise that doesn't exist here for, for our city.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, since we were moving forward with that. And then the question that I had for you, well, actually, probably two questions. This, do you know when she was talking about it being in phases, when this is planned to be done?
And real quick, if you don't mind, just for the record, for Debbie, name and address, and then give.
Yeah, so JD Lyle, 332 North Broadmoor Way, Nampa, Idaho. I'll try to take over for Becky here. So you're, you're just asking the projected year of full buildout?
Yes.
So, six phases, like she kind of highlighted in the presentation, typically, one to two year per phase. So you're looking at anywhere from probably eight to 12 years, just depending, so.
Because, well, the reason I'm asking is because we do have a letter from Valley View that says that by 2029, so four years, five years or so before this is done, they're going to be at capacity again. So I just wanted to keep that in mind while we talk about this because also if this were to be approved, and Verbena has not or will not be approved, how does that affect your project?
So, one of the things, and I know this was an issue at planning and zoning, was the whole reliance on Verbena. So this project would be entirely functional on its own. I think one of the misinterpretations of the reliance was a big thing regarding sewer. If you look at the master plan for sewer in that area, there's no plan to have any sort of sewer come all the way up 10th or all the way up future Bear, some of the surface roads adjacent to our property. This property master plan is to go through the north. And if you go out there and look at the topography of it, it makes sense because 10th sends a little bit higher, there's kind of a low drainage spot through our site to the north, just kind of the natural spot for sewer to go. Unfortunately, you know, anything that happens to the north, we don't have any control over it. The city was open to allowing us to construct a lift station. I know the temporary tag can be scary, confusing. This lift station would be constructed to city of Caldwell DEQ requirements. It would be designed and constructed as a permanent lift station until a gravity option is available to the north of the project. In terms of any other reliance, there's, there's really not anything else. The city is planning on this year constructing a water line from Mallard Park to the south, all the way up to Valley View Middle School. That's going to be our primary source of water whenever that project said it's budgeted to, to be done this year. Maybe Haley can touch on that a little bit more. But the sewer aspect of it is really just an option for us to come in and develop without a gravity route as it sits right now.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions at this time?
Okay.
Thank you so much. We also had Troy. Is it Dan or Don? If you could, if you could state your name and then address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Troy Dana. I am, I'm representing the owner, Element Ridge LLC. I'm the owner of the property. We purchased it several years ago. And I appreciate what our engineers and our Dura has done for the presentation. And I think that we're all kind of getting the picture that's being painted here. I think some of the main concerns that, that you have with a lift station or that Planning and Zoning had is they didn't understand. We, we have a memorandum of understanding actually signed by the city that we were donating the two acre piece to help out the water tank, and in return, it would be possible for us to get a lift station temporarily. We have that done. I'm also the owner of the Carter Commons property that's down off Carter Avenue between Florida and Indiana. That was approved by this council a year and a half ago. And as we continue design and go through that one, we have, when this water issue was made known to us over in Zone Two where Element Ridge is, after some consideration, I proposed to Rob and Haley that why don't we, we'll donate another acre on that piece, and we'll do a well, a city well for you guys there. We will pay for it. We will be reimbursed under the MOU that we have signed that says we will do that. We'll be reimbursed, and we will provide a new well in your city in an area, if the test well turns out, in an area that'll help loop your systems back together. So, in the spirit of, you know, working together, that's what I've tried to do over the last year and a half, is find ways where I could help out the city, and in return, we could work with our engineers and with the city's staff and planning and their engineers to say, let's come up with a project that stands on its own. I don't need anybody else. And we can do what we can do to kind of help the city out as well with this water issue that seems to be a pretty big issue, and so happy to help out there. That's probably all I got to say about, I think Becky did a good job on the subdivision itself, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Counselor Register?
So I just want to be clear, then, you're, you're not relying on Verbena?
No. I don't know really who owns it, never was involved with them. And I offered the well, or the storage tank property so I could help the city solve their problems in return. It, it kind of helps my subdivision do what it needs to do.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Olgood?
Yes, sir. I just want to, this seems like a complicated process, getting all these dominos to fall in a correct order, water tank, lift station, that kind of thing. Have you got all that worked out, timing issue with your phases that you're building? I mean, are, is, I'm kind of getting at what the city's responsibility would be to get you off the ground, or do you have that worked out?
Well, regardless of phases, because I may not be the owner of all those phases, okay? I'm not a home builder, okay? I'm a developer. So regarding the phases, that's probably up to some future home builder. I was just trying to solve in 2025 and maybe into 26, water for that piece of property that I had purchased, and sewer. And so, we've done the best we can just to kind of solve for that. As far as homes coming online and all that, that's, you know, yeah, we have it laid out as to what it might be. But as a home builder, I can't speak to say, I'm going to sell 60 homes this year, 80 the next year. I can't do that.
Okay. Counselor Williams?
Thank you for your willingness to help the city in our need.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much.
Just one last thing. I just wanted, I don't know, she was probably trying to sum up what she was doing, but I just want to make sure that we, we've taken careful consideration to make sure that we're within a comp plan. We're not asking for any variations. We're not doing anything. And so I think it all fits in harmony of what the city's future growth should be. And then, and then above and beyond that, we did what we could do to help out with water and sewer. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes?
I would just, I'd, I'd like to call on Mr. McDonald again, if we could, just to make sure that this timing, you know, because this, this gentleman is just trying to get it off the ground. We've got to look at it long term. Mr. McDonald, between the lift station and the, and the water tanks and stuff, when would construction start on those so that there wasn't an issue going forward? Do you, do you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Olgood. So the sewer lift station is something that they have to build for their development. And that's something that is on them to build, but we've given them, and this is not uncommon. We've given a lot of developers this opportunity to do a lift station that ends up being temporary. And then if, if Verbena ends up building, then they will take that lift station offline and reconnect through. So the lift station will have to be built, of course, before they can build any houses, and that's on them. The water tank, we are, it, it's not immediate that we're trying to build the water tank. We're just trying to get the land established so that we have a plan moving forward. We're likely not going to start building a water tank maybe for a couple of years. But we want to have that area identified, and we want to be able to plan forward with that water tank, so.
So they're talking about the first 48 homes in the next two years? They, they would have water supply in the next two years for that first phase?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Olgood, they have the, the note that is in their staff report, just like we've put in every other engineering staff report, that they cannot go vertical and build houses or pull permits for houses until the water supply is sufficient. And that is one of the reasons why they have offered to dedicate that piece of land down at Carter Commons so that a well can start, can be built at that location. And that is something that they are currently pursuing so that they can expedite that and have the water supply so that by the time they're ready to start pulling permits for houses, that well and hopefully one or two other wells are going to be online, which will put us in a very good situation.
Okay. Thank you for coming back up again.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to continue with our public testimony. So this is for those in opposition that have signed up and indicated that they did want to speak tonight. Lanay Van Valen, I believe, if you could come forward, and then if you could state your name and address for the record. And then after that, you'll be given three minutes for your testimony.
My name is Lanay Van Valen. My address is 15453 Rosewood Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I appreciate your, the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I was not born and raised here like so many of my friends and neighbors, but I love it and plan to stay. I come to you tonight as a smart growth advocate, and you are smart, and that's why you are here. My neighbors and friends' families have settled in homestead this land we now live on, and planning, building, and living smart here. We honor and respect that legacy to be good stewards of what we have been blessed with. However, this is not the case regarding the Element Ridge traffic analysis proposed mitigation solutions as adequately addressing negative impacts Element Ridge creates for my neighborhood. For instance, what are the plans for future expansion of the proposed left turn lane from 10th Avenue to David? What's the storage capacity for this proposed left turn lane? How can it be, and when will it be expanded in the future? What about a designated David left turn lane onto 10th? Where is this address? As planned, there will be increased traffic volumes, so at least striping for a left turn lane increases safety for those turning from David. It would be beneficial also to provide additional information and descriptions of the proposed crosswalk improvements at David and 10th, and the completion date. The speeding issue already existing for David is not addressed. With increased traffic volumes, speed bumps or similar surface treatments could assist in maintaining future safe speed limits. Airport, Cypress, and Ashland will become a shortcut or a cut-through route from Element Ridge to Carter through our neighborhood, and this issue is not addressed. This concern was brought up at the July neighborhood meeting with our Dura. It is easy to conclude that these streets will not be the only neighborhood streets uses shortcuts for 10th Avenue and Carter as traffic volumes grow. Plans for any and all direct access from Element Ridge to the Somerset West neighborhood should be removed. Yes, I understand Kimball has already proposed to be a direct access onto David, and this should be eliminated in the interest of neighborhood street safety. The average citizens needs to understand how you are addressing these issues and the traffic. Study, and how is this proposed water tank at the corner of Airport and David consistent with the residential community? This huge tank belongs in an industrial commercial area, not residential. How would you like to live next to a huge water tank after you moved into the neighborhood? Now our community walks, runs, uses the streets, visits and checks in with our neighbors, kids, dogs, grandkids on streets that have no sidewalks but are safe enough to do so. The Element Ridge proposal will not allow that with all this additional traffic introduced to our neighborhood. Our current neighborhood and sense of community will be destroyed. No, the integrity and safety and quality of life for my existing neighborhood has not been considered. This proposed annexation is how you are introducing the city of Caldwell to our Somerset West neighborhood, and right now, it's not a good look or smart growth. Is that what you really want, the city of Caldwell, legacy to our neighborhood to be ever known for? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Next up is Sue Stover. If you could please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and then if you could remember your, the three minutes, it'll be up on the clock for you.
I'm going to try, but my husband didn't come up to take his three. Good evening. My name is Sue Stover, and I live at 15456 Cypress Street, Caldwell. I'm going to try not to duplicate what Lanay said because I didn't realize we were kind of on the same page, but we sort of are. I know development is inevitable, and I will address, and others will address the density, schools, and water issues, but I'm going to focus on the traffic and what I see is the loss of sense of safety and community in our subdivision. We're an ideally quiet county subdivision. Most of our residents have lived there for many years. They're older, they walk every day, and they feel safe because there is no traffic. We talk with each other, we know each other by name, and we look out for each other, especially our elderly ones. This is not just a subdivision, but a desirable community that we've built and we're proud to live in. The developers want to tie into our roads and claim improvements are for the city's benefit. ITD is going to terminate all access from Highway 55 except for a right-hand turn lane on Ashland Street and then nothing to Farmway. Ashland is only two blocks long and extends to the north from Highway 55. The road ends at my driveway with a 90-degree turn west, continues for the distance of two homes, and then makes a blind 90-degree turn to the north. There are no sidewalks, curbs, or streetlights. Visibility is almost non-existent. It's difficult and dangerous for cars to pass each other, even in the best of daylight conditions, when there are no cars on the street. The increase in traffic, not just limited to Element Ridge, but also potentially Toll Brothers, is an additional 1,250 homes. That means there's garbage trucks, there's delivery tux, buses, visitors. If Airport and Bear Lane are extended to Homedale and Eustick, the most convenient way for people to get north and south will be to come through our neighborhood and avoid the congestion at 10th Avenue and the school zones at Homedale. And once this is done, our neighborhood and our, our community will no longer exist as it is today. I'm trying to skip the stuff that she did. One of the proposals said that Bear Lane could be a 35 mile an hour road. That does not fit within our neighborhood. I also wonder about the value of my home because right now I have between 10 and 20 cars on a given day. And we're talking hundreds up to thousands of homes on that little itty-bitty tiny street so that you guys can punch, or that developers can punch all the way out to Homedale and Eustick. They're graciously bearing the cost of improving 10th Avenue, but this is only in front of their development. Take a look at this stretch between David and Carter Road. There's no room, and there's no proposals for development, for widening that, for turn lanes, for sidewalks. Yet all of that traffic is going to funnel within that few blocks. If you drive down 10th Avenue, you can see how the developers have done that. There are wide roads and great stretches, and then all the existing homes and stuff that are there, there's nothing. The street strongly asks you to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate you wrapping it up there. Brad Carrico, if you could please come forward, and if you could state your name and address for the record, and then also you'll have your three minutes for your testimony.
Thank you. Brad Carrico, 16227 South Kimball Avenue. I come tonight before you to ask for denial of the annexation and plating of the subdivision Element Ridge. I have submitted written comments, which should be part of your packet. I just want to reiterate a few things that have come to my mind since I submitted those. One concern I have is water, and it's been talked about a lot here tonight. As a former firefighter, I know the importance of having adequate water supplies. Once upon a time, while I was still on active duty here in Caldwell, we didn't have to worry about knowing we had enough water when we hooked a hydrant. We usually had the water unless it was a big commercial fire. I've been led to believe now lately that even on common residential structure fires, there's been a need to have water department called to ensure that they have adequate water supply. Whether or not that that's actually true or not, I don't know, but I take it from a reliable source. Again, fire flow predicates what I pay as an insurance payer in the, in these cities. Going to the water, well, I'm on the water board for our subdivision, and they have said in the planning and zoning that they were not planning a well in Element Ridge. But now we are here tonight that they're talking about it again. Verbena Ranch talked about a well. What are the depths? We've got four or five community wells between Speck and Somerset West. What's the effect is it going to have on our wells? Are you going to protect us, or are you going to punch your wells, drain ours dry, and then take us into city property? Traffic, most of it's been talked about. Sue Stomley Thunder about the section of road from David to 10th. And there's been nothing done, and that's where the bottleneck is going to be. Also, the impact on the highway district for paying for the roads within our subdivision from this city-generated traffic. And going to the lift station. My experience in Caldwell has been what's meant to be temporary has a way of becoming permanent for a long time. And I would say that a temporary lift station to get these guys started would not probably be in the best interest of the city. They need to do it right, do it correctly the first time, so they don't have to dig it up three or four times and add money to all the taxpayers. That, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Gordon Teri- Terio?
What's up?
If you could state your name correctly for us, that'd be appreciated, and then your address, and then after that you'll be given three minutes as well.
My name is Gordon Terio, address 16226 Horizon Drive. I come here with a couple of questions for council that I know that they won't answer, but why are we here? The lack of infrastructure has been gone over infinitum with, with everybody here. I'm not going to rehash it because it's just a waste of time. So why are we here? The developer during a P&amp;Z hearing asked for a number of variances for items that don't conform to Caldwell's codes. Okay? Apparently, it's way too difficult to come up with a plan to go along with the codes that have been existing before they get here. Based on the history of the council, they keep giving developers what they want, regardless of what the codes and the plans require. There's no incentive for Eldora or any other builder to conform. P&amp;Z, at their meeting, which I was at, took a big issue with Eldora's inability to provide clear explanation as to where the water for this development will come from. Eldora intends to place a 30-foot water tank onsite. Apparently, now it's only 16, but they're not sure where the water's going to come from. Mr. Dana just stated that they're going to put a well down at Carter Commons. Depending on how the test well comes out, so it's a crapshoot. He doesn't know if there's water there. The biggest issue P&amp;Z had is with the temporary lift station to maintain the sewer system. The lift station will feed the sewer main coming from Verbena Ranch. Contrary to what was said tonight, it was made really explicit that they needed Verbena Ranch to get through before they could go through. Just, that's just the way it's going to work out. In other words, this development can't stand alone. It depends on development that has been denied by this council. P&amp;Z stated that Caldwell does not allow or does not encourage lift stations. Apparently, there's been issues in the past with these lift stations, including the one downtown by the fairgrounds. So again, why are we here? Since council denied Verbena Ranch, this development cannot, should not be approved. Following what I have to say was with all due respect to the council, unless of course this council knows that Verbena Ranch will be approved, was there a meeting that took place behind closed doors, including a wink, "I want to approve it"? Luckily, the gentleman over here changed his vote. I would suggest that you recuse yourself from any voting on this. Don't do this to the city of Caldwell. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just make a quick comment. I trust all of these council members up here to my left and to my right, and they are not taking any bribes, they're not doing any discussion behind the scenes, doing anything in that regard. So I just, I just, I know you had said your piece, I'm just standing up for the council members that they take this job very seriously and would never even consider anything of that. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I understand that, and I was hoping that's the way it was, because an insinuation would say that I, I think you guys did. Okay, I asked a question. If I ask you, are you the mayor? It says right in front of your desk that yes, you're the mayor. If I ask a question, does something go on behind closed doors? It's because I don't know when I'm asking for an answer. Thank you.
Okay. Ron Dillon, and if you would please state your name and address for the record, and then you'll be given three minutes as well.
Ron Dillon, 15187 Daniel Street, Caldwell. Chuck, thank you. I, your simple, to-the-point comments earlier guaranteed that you will be reelected this fall. Thank you, sir. Well played. I haven't worn this jacket in 48 years. It seems to have shrunk a little bit, but it seemed appropriate to wear it tonight. I'm a, a proud graduate of Valley View High School, class of 77. I was the student body president, went on to a full ride scholarship at BYU. I was marketing student of the year at Boise State when I graduated there with honors in 96. And if I hear the catchphrase gatherings, vibrant gathering spaces one more time, I'm afraid I'm going to have to vomit right here on your carpet. I noticed that education, access, and quality are at the top of your master plan, social determinants. I'll tell you what, you've got your work cut out for you. It used to be a badge of honor to go to school at Valley View. Now it's the fastest running school district in Idaho, and its test scores have dropped it down to 89th out of 159 Idaho high schools, earning a disgusting 2.75 stars. I might add, at least it beat out Caldwell High, which finished a disgraceful 131st out of 159 Idaho high schools. Let that sink in. Our schools are falling apart, and I, I heard just a briefest comment earlier about Valley View said we're going to need a new school, another school by 2029. I spent an hour and a half talking with them several days ago, and they told me, "We're in trouble. We're going to need another high school and two more grade schools. Cost of that will be $150 million." And I've learned, you guys are making me smarter. I've learned that it's almost impossible to expand or change a school district boundary. You can keep growing and annexing, but you don't have to pay like the people in the Valley View School District do. They're getting pounded. The quality of Valley View schools is going to continue to decline. I don't understand why developers don't have to pay any impact fees. I've read the law over and over. It looks vague to me. I was told it was probably a lawsuit that went to the Idaho Supreme Court. I spoke with Kuna School District today. They're trying to change the laws desperately so that developers have to start paying impact fees towards schools. Why are we not doing the same? Why are you ignoring our schools and all your planning and all your discussion? If you let these kids, you let the wheels come off this wagon, and society is going to start falling apart. I'm, I'm embarrassed that schools are not top of the list here. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate you recognizing the time as well. Butch Jeffrey? So if you would state your name and address for the record, and then after that you'll have three minutes as well.
Butch Jeffrey, 15179 David Street, Caldwell. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for the opportunity to share my concerns tonight. I drive north on 10th every day to go to work during 8:00 and 8:30. Quite a lot of traffic. Used to take me eight. It's about 5.4 miles to my, to my work. Used to take me about five, 10 minutes. Now it's about 15 to 20. A lot of that is because the buses that are on the road picking up kids, they stop in the street. There's no room on either side of it. I understand that they're going to develop right in front, as Sue said earlier, but what about beyond Homedale where a lot of the traffic is? I think their traffic study didn't do justice. It didn't take into account any other traffic going north towards downtown, which is where we want to drive people with the great downtown that was built. A lot of events going on down there. People want to travel that way, but it's very restrictive. The, the road's not really wide, no sidewalks. If you do add lanes and do that, there's going to be sidewalks right outside people's doors. I just don't think there's room for that. So it's listed, 10th Avenue is listed as a minor arterial roadway with no improvement scheduled until 2028. I think something needs to be done to look at that, maybe move it up. As I said, between Homedale and downtown, the traffic is, is really bad. You can get behind cars waiting to make a left turn and be sitting behind 20, 30 cars. There's cars trying to pull out of a side street onto 10th. Takes them quite a while just to get out there just during that. I know traffic is a touchy subject, but road improvement is needed, and, and I know the impact studies have, have proven that. Lack of sidewalks, a lot of, a lot of kids are going to be, you know, walking on the street. Right now, they're walking in dirt, bad weather. Back to the buses, stopping, is there any plans to do any bus stops for the kids along 10th Avenue? I think that would come in handy. Be really good. And then a little bit about the, the water tank. It is going to be an eyesore for current residents that have lived in those homes for multiple years. To have that put out in front of their place, I don't think is, is very just. Thank you for your time this evening.
Good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Jewel Jeffrey?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to go ahead and just read what I prepared. Some of it's already been addressed, but I'm here tonight in opposition to the proposed 3 million gallon water tank, storage tank at the corner of David and Airport Drive. It's my understanding that if these parcels are approved and annexed into the city, the out-of-state developer of Element Ridge will donate 2.2 acres of land to the city to build this water storage tank. In a prior public meeting addressing the MOU, the city's public works director shared other local property owners had been approached with the idea to build the water tank on their property, but to no avail. The director also stated he thought this was a great spot for the tank because of its elevation and the location in the back corner of the proposed Element Ridge development. But what wasn't said was that this tank was going to be built right across the street from homes that hold a much higher value than even the proposed homes at Element Ridge will be building. Is this because these homes are in the county and not the city? Is that why this wasn't considered? The impact to these homes and to these property owners. During the same presentation, the director, the public works director suggested this land carries a higher value of being near the lake, and that the developer could have built six to seven homes on this lot, but instead decided to donate it to the city. Why? In exchange for what? Why would the developer do this? Why would the city approve it? Is this to stay in good standing with the developer for future projects? I don't know. Also, to suggest burying this 3 million gallon water tank 10 to 20 feet in the ground to help mitigate the direct impact to those around it suggests that this solution for Zone 2 may not be the right location. I ask you to deny accepting the land donation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jeff Boland?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jeff Boland, 16121 Susan Avenue, Caldwell. I graduated from that high school also in 1983. Lived here all my life. I sit here now and invite all of you to get into suburban, drive down Indiana, Montana, or 10th Avenue to Orchard. That all used to be Wildlife Refuge. Not there anymore. Gone. All to build homes. Drive down there and look. And what have they done to our roads? Nothing. They say they can improve them? What, they put a turn-in to the subdivision? I'm sorry. You know what? It has to be done right. I've said it before. We're not looking at it. This water tank, he said it's not for us, for anything, a subdivision? Really? How come we didn't have it before then? It's going to improve the city? All this is is lip service, and you know, taking away our way of life and our agriculture. That's all it is. I invite you, if you'd not, I'll get public transit, and I'll go with you guys, and let's look and see what's happening. Seriously, this is enough. For God's sake, we're running out of our land, and we're not paying attention. I say no. For God's sake, no. Please consider it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time. And Sheila Boland?
Sheila Boland, 16121 Susan Avenue. According to the EPA, the average family uses 300 gallons of water a day. How many thousands of homes have been added? We've right, right now, even the legislators, they know that, hey, there's issues with water. We need to start taking, you know, we need to start taking this into consideration. We need to do studies. They talk about cloud seeding because not enough water. Idaho Power wants all its tests done, et cetera. Department of Water Resources, it's all out there. So let's just keep adding to a real big potential problem. Schools, over and over and over again, Valley View District, that's all country. Not no more. It's us getting hammered. And the roads, and I can't help but wonder, where are these people that want to move into these places anyhow? Because I'm not seeing a lot of, I'm not seeing a lot of that. I do see the traffic. Oh my God, do I see the traffic. And it's atrocious. And that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming here as well. That's everybody, everyone that did sign up wish, indicating they wished to testify this evening. So with that, we'll go back to the applicant for your closing rebuttal, and then be ready to stand for some questions, I'm sure, from council.
Do I need to restate my name and everything?
Uh, no, I think we're good.
Okay. So first off, I guess I'll, I'll say I appreciate everyone coming out and voicing their opinions. I know this is a, a big deal to everybody that lives out in that area. I'll start with just some of the traffic stuff. So one of the first comments, we are planning on constructing a left turn lane from 10th onto David. We also are planning improvements as well as just striping a left turn from David onto 10th. David Lane, as it sits right now, is classified as a local road. There's not a lot of room on our side to improve it. There's these big power poles running all the way through there. We do plan to install curb and gutter as well as sidewalk through there, which I think would help with pedestrian access, pedestrian access, kids' access to the school there. We also are planning on improving the pedestrian crossing on 10th. There's an existing crossing at David. I know the highway district highlighted that that's not an ideal spot for that crossing. So we'll just work with the city and the school district to determine a, a more suitable location, probably up to where the primary approach to our subdivision is at. Regarding all the offsite stuff, the impact fees were adopted just recently. As we highlighted in our presentation, we are planning on, not planning on, we will be required over the course of the build-out to contribute about $900,000 in impact fees compared to what used to be laid out in the staff reports. We would originally have been contributing about $150,000. So once we contribute those, those will be pulled at, pulled at building permits, and then the city can use those fees to, to improve roadways, intersections, however they see fit down the road. I know, obviously, the well and the water tank, excuse me, the water tank, and then there was talk of a well earlier tonight. This location is not planned as of right now to have a well on it. The water tank is planned to be connected to the existing infrastructure, which is in the city's pressure zone 2. Essentially, everything below the Phyllis Canal is what that's going to be. There's no plan for a well at this location. The water tank is also not critical. It's actually not even really for the direct benefit of this development. It's really for the benefit of the system as a whole, but our, our subdivision sits in pressure zone 4. This is going to tie into pressure zone 2. The well that has been talked about is down at Carter and Indiana. So it's, it's not even in the, really the same vicinity as where our project is. Actually, in a different pressure zone than, than where our project sits right now. And, and the big thing, I guess I'll just close out, you know, the, what's been brought up a lot tonight is our, our so-called reliance on the project to the north of us. I'll just highlight again, there, there is no reliance on the project to the north. There is a, a master plan sewer route for this area to go to the north of our project. With the lift station, it allows us to come in beforehand. We've, we've worked with the city. We've talked with the city. The city has reserved capacity for our project in the existing infrastructure at the corner of 10th and Homedale, which is where we would tie in with, with the pressure line. But traffic, there's, there's no reliance on Verbena for any sort of traffic improvements, anything like that. The city is, as I mentioned earlier, bringing a water line from Mallard Park up to Valley View Middle School. That'll be their main source of water. We also are planning on constructing a water line in David that, that the city would reimburse us for as, as we build that one out. But there, there is no reliance. We, we've worked with the city a lot. Just hi, I just want to highlight again, I feel like we're doing a lot for the city with the water tank, but it's all been with, under the, the guide that Element Ridge is going to stand alone as its own project and be a benefit to the city at the end of the day. So stand for any questions, guys.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Counselor Doughty?
Yes. Can we go over what would the landscaping look like around the water tower? So that, one of the concerns is they're going to look across the street or next door and see the water tower. We kind of skipped over that. Can you go over- and see the water tower. We kind of skipped over that. Can you go over what, what kind of landscaping would be around the water tower?
Sure. So comparatively speaking, there's an existing water tank down at Moss in Indiana, right in the middle of a residential area. If you go drive by and look at that one directly on the north side of Moss, there's, there's some trees that are planted and then just kind of grass around it. As part of the MOU that was agreed or approved by, by this council, the developer will just have a say along with the, the city to determine exactly what type of landscaping is going to go around that, whether it's taller trees, you know, maybe there's a potential that it's painted in some way, a mural of some kind, I don't know. But there will be careful consideration to what type of landscaping goes around this. Not only for the, the people across the street, but also the proposed lots that are adjacent to, to the well lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Philip.
Haley, I guess you get to speak now. Have you guys talked about what type of landscaping from a city's perspective will be around the water tower?
We haven't, we haven't spoken specifically about the landscaping around the water tower other than that Katie and I, the Planning Department, Engineering Department, would work closely together to ensure that it's, to that we're, we're minimizing the impact as much as possible. So I don't, I don't have a specific planting schedule for what we would do around the water tower, other than that we would just work with the Planning Department and make sure that it is code compliant. And if the council wanted to require specific items regarding landscaping around the water tank, then that's something that we can, we certainly would follow and listen to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, certainly listening to the folks that have testified tonight and, and seeing most water towers that are around, not just in Caldwell, there is usually, unless it's from many, many years ago, some sort of landscaping to break that up around those. So we certainly need to, if it is approved tonight, that certainly needs to be addressed with how we offset that so that they're not staring directly into a water tower. And then there was a question about the wells and the aquifer. I think this has been asked and answered before, but the local wells that are on private property and Haley or Mr. McDonald, either one, that the, if we, if the city drills a new well, it would go into the aquifer. Is that correct?
There will not be a well close enough to these aquifers that's, it's going to have an impact. The wells that we are contemplating is, as JD mentioned, over at Carter Commons, which is well off-site of this area. This project only contemplates a tank, which will not connect to any aquifer systems.
I, I understand, but even the wells that are off-site, we drill into the aquifer, correct? Is that not true, or is that, or we don't know?
Typically, we're going to drill into a different aquifer than the surrounding areas. And in fact, we have staff that will very closely monitor any wells that we drill, as well as our consultants. We will very closely monitor any wells that we drill to ensure that we're not impacting aquifers of existing wells.
I have just one more. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please frame from your comments in the audience.
Well, let's, let's let Haley expand on that. So there's some laughter in the crowd. So how do we ensure that we don't?
So when you're looking at groundwater monitoring systems, first of all, you, we would first look at drilling into an aquifer system that is different than the surrounding areas. If by any reason that there were a well in an aquifer, I don't have all of the data in front of me, so I don't want to guarantee which, which aquifers various residences are connected to. If there were a well in an exists, in an aquifer that we would be connecting to, we would look at the drawdown factors of the existing wells on that aquifer as well as our drawdown factor to ensure that we are not adding any more drawdown to an aquifer that would cause damage to any wells. We would also monitor how the, the renewal weight or the renewal rate, excuse me, of that aquifer so that we know at what wait, rate water is adding, is being added back into that system. And so we, we monitor all of these different impacts so that we wouldn't, we wouldn't affect current residences based on DEQ requirements, state code. There's, there's a lot of codes and laws and ordinances on the books that would ensh, ensure that the city system wouldn't have impact on a resident.
And just one more, Mr. Mayor, I have written here. So there was a mention that there weren't any variances for codes. And then a gentleman mentioned there were variances for codes. So could we get that resolved, if there's variances for codes or not?
I, I can, yeah, I can just answer it right now. And I, I don't, maybe Katie can follow up. But yeah, there's, there's no, we're not asking for any variances relative to code. We're, we're meeting minimum lot sizes for R1 density. We're not any, asking for any reductions and setbacks, open space, anything like that. Everything that we've presented in front of you is, is meeting what the code is for R1 zoning.
Can you confirm that, Katie?
Mayor and counselor, yes, that is correct. They have not asked for any variances or any waivers of any kind for this project.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor and Counselor Doty, I did want to clarify, there is currently a condition that's listed for this site-specific, under the site-specific requirements that does address, prior to construction drawing, submittal of Phase One, the applicant shall work with city staff to update the landscape plan, showing additional landscaping around the well site to act as screening. As Haley kind of mentioned, her and I did talk about that we would work with the applicant if this were to be approved, to essentially provide adequate landscaping around that.
Counselor Doty? Just want to clarify around the tank site.
Mayor and counselor, that is correct. And if you would like to modify that condition in any way, you could include that in a motion.
Okay, very good.
Maybe I could just leave with one more thing, just again, because I know there's been a lot of talk about the wells here. The well that has been discussed is a part of a completely different project on a completely different site. The well, there is no well that's planned as a part of this project. The lot that's being donated is planned for a water tank, not a well. There is no well with this project. So I just want to leave that for you guys.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I don't see any other questions. So with that, I stand for a motion to close public testimony. And a second?
Second.
That's a motion from Counsel Register and a second from Counsel Stoddick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So with that, this is turned over to your hands. Staff is available for questions. Any comments, discussion, or any motions? Counsel Register.
Hello. For planning and zoning, do we have an updated number of doors yet? Any kind of report on that yet? We had one in twenty twenty-two. I think asked a couple of times now, and I'm curious if that's been updated yet.
Mayor and council, we do not. I can believe the last time we gave a report on doors was in twenty twenty-four, but it was probably summertime of twenty twenty-four. We do not have an updated count on the number of doors as of right now.
Okay. Well, then on a side note, could you send that to me? The only one I remember is the one from when we were, we had like nine thousand nine hundred and seven, and I think that was twenty twenty-two. Or nine, nine thousand nine hundred and seventy or something like that. It was right after we came on council, like, okay. So earlier, we were talking about the comp plan, and we made mention a little bit about how we were sitting here right now affected by decisions that were made twenty, thirty, forty years ago. And maybe they didn't know what was going to happen in Caldwell, and they did their best to figure out what they could based on the information they had. But here's what we have. We do know that the school's going to be over capacity by twenty twenty-nine. That's a problem for a lot of us. In the planning and zoning meeting, they talked about this temporary sewer lift that would be in place until Verbena is able to continue the sewer development throughout their site. So now, at this meeting, this development is now backing away from the, this connection with Verbena. And I'm not trying to be rude, but I just, I don't buy it. I think there's a connection between the two and that they're relying on each other and, and, and planning and zoning thought that to the point where they denied the project. So there has to be something that we're missing here that there just wasn't this change between that meeting and now, in my opinion. The thing about, they also, they also were clear at that meeting that Verbena needed to stand on its own. And so there, there has to be some reason why they thought that, that I don't think is cleared up, like I just said. As far as the well situation, I think that if it can happen once, it can happen again. I just, I'm, I'm just not interested in putting in more and more developments, especially if this one's tied to Verbena, which is a great big huge one, with any kind of well problems until we have this stuff settled. In saying that, when, when a counselor asks a staff member about a question that she's trying to find the answer to, it's, it's not appropriate to laugh at her. She's doing the best that she can. She's trying to answer the questions the best that she can. And it may sound a little roundabout, but maybe she just doesn't know. And in saying that, I think we need to know. I think we need to be sure before we approve anything else. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion based on the findings of facts and conclusions of law. The Caldwell City Council hereby orders that case number ANN zero one three and SPP zero zero two, a request by Ardua Inc. for annexation with a zoning classification of R1 low desert residential, low-density residential located at the intersection of South Tenth and Carter Road is denied, including the conditions and approvals as outlined in the staff report, and the reasons being the same as planning and zoning, traffic, schools, et cetera.
Okay. So we have a motion for denial of the project? We have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Counsel Register and a second from Counsel Stoddick for denial of the requested annexation. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, I don't see any. So with that, so again, just to clarify, so it's kind of a...
You're looking at me when you say that.
Sorry, Counsel Allgood. Kind of a double negative. So if you vote green, it is to deny the, the annexation. A red vote would deny the motion and keep it open for further discussion or motions. So with that, voting is open at this time? And all votes are cast. The voting is closed. And that motion, so it is a tie again. So there are Counsel Doty, Counsel Williams, and Counsel Dittenberg voted in, against the motion for denial. And Counsel Stoddick and Counsel Register and Counsel Allgood voted in favor of the denial, which means that with three to three, that the man in the middle gets to vote on this one. So I am going to not belate, belater, or beliter, the beleager, the point. And I'm going to vote in opposition of the motion as well. So that would be four in opposition to three in favor. So that motion does fail. And so that opens it back up for council if there is a new motion that someone would like to make or further discussion or questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Doty?
I'll, I'll state it. It's, you know, this is a development in which is the lowest density that we require in the city. It's the developments that we're looking for. It's the most impact fees we've ever seen be paid for the streets and the roads to be done. And our city will continue to grow. So I believe in the private property rights, and it sounds like the answers from our city staff were sufficient. So I'll make a motion. Is it bill number sixty? No, we're too far, aren't we?
Yep, one of those. So there...
I just had my page flipped over. Based on the findings of facts and conclusions of law, the Caldwell City Council hereby orders that case number ANN twenty-four thirteen SPP twenty-four two, a request by Ardua for annexation with a zoning classification of R1 low-density residential located at the intersection of South Tenth Avenue and Carter Road is approved, including the conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report. Also, I would like to add that city staff is heavily involved with the concealment of the water tank if approved.
Very good. So we have a motion for approval with the conditions as outlined in the additional clarification on the condition regarding the landscaping around the proposed water tank site. Do we have a second?
Second.
So it's a motion for approval from Counsel Doty and a second from Counsel Dittenberg. Any discussion on that motion?
I have something to say.
Yes, Counsel Register.
The one, one thing that I do keep hearing about is private property rights. And I just want to remind this council that property, private property rights are extremely important. But when you buy a plot of land and it's zoned a certain way, or it's in a certain area, or whatever else, that's where your property, property rights lie. They do not extend to the things that maybe the city will grant you, like an annexation, another zone, whatever it is. So I don't know exactly what this was zoned, but if this were zoned in R1 and it were in the city and somebody was looking to put apartments in, that is not their automatic right. Their right goes to how they bought the property. So I just want to clear that up because we keep hearing that. So in this case, this development does not have a private property right to automatically annex into the city and build homes on it. So just to sort of keep that in mind. And again, I would remind everybody on this council that in twenty twenty-nine, when Valley View was full again and a bond has to go to the taxpayer to pay for more schools, that that's because of decisions that we're making right now. So.
Okay, Counsel Stoddick?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to tell our folks that attended this meeting too that the county's going to put the city in a very predictable, bad environment, if you want to put it that way. Because every time they, they release ag ground to us, you know, usually it's, it's annexed to the city. The city does not solicit to annex ground. We don't do that. But the county continues to do that. And again, there's supposed to be supporters of ag ground. So you might remember that too when election time comes up. But it is, and it's going to be that way. Right now, I wouldn't be a bit surprised if some more of these come to the council that formerly is ag ground. In fact, I know it's gonna, it's gonna happen. So just keep that in mind too. But we don't, we don't have a lot of choice in that. Like I said, we don't solicit annexation out of the county into the city. That's something that the county does. The city does not do that. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Allgood, Jeff?
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with Counselor Doty. And I just want to make, make clear why, why I voted no. The developer is a good developer. We are growing at over five percent a year. That will not stop. We can come say we don't want this subdivision. We don't want that subdivision. Growth is going to continue. If Caldwell were to put a fence around us and say we're not growing anymore, Nampa would just surround us and keep going. Growth will not stop. The only reason I voted no, the reason I voted no, is I have concerns that we're not met with the infrastructure reaching this development. I don't want to guess whether or not infrastructure is going to reach this development. I, when we can say infrastructure will be there and it will not affect the surrounding neighborhoods, I would be a yes vote because I know it's coming. But anyway, I just wanted to make that clear. I'm not, I'm not anti-growth. I know it's coming. I just, I want to be sure before I put something else in that we cannot approve or repair or support, I should say.
Thank you very much. Respect those comments a lot. Counsel Allgood. Any further discussion on that motion? And so the motion was for approval of the development with the conditions as listed in the additional, to the one condition in regards to the landscaping around the proposed water tank lot with heavily involved with staff to ensure that that is properly done. So with that, voting...
Well, it'll have to be a voice vote.
So we're going to have to do a voice vote on that. So that is all right. So...
Okay. Doty?
Yes.
Stoddick?
No.
Register?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Allgood?
No.
Dittenberg?
Yes.
Very good. So I don't think it's a surprise that it was a tie on that. And I appreciate the discussion. And as I said, really, respect Counsel Allgood. I mean, all the discussion that was had, appreciate you kind of highlighting your concerns there on that. And the people that came out appreciate your time and testimony on that. And when I look at this, I know there's a lot of talk about property rights and things like that. And that's all important. But I really look at this area. It is very agriculture in nature right now. However, it borders a arterial roadway. It fronts a school and very close connection to a highway. It is, I know we talked earlier this morning about the concern about Farmway Road. That's another mile to the west. So this is even closer in to the city limits. Obviously, it abuts city limits and growth is going to happen in that area so that we can get the water up from Mallard Park in that regards. The lift station, those are common. I'm in the city, I know there's several of those around that function properly. There are issues occasionally on certain ones. I'm in the city. I know there's several of those around that function properly. There are issues occasionally on certain ones, but for the most part, they do function very well. We have several of them throughout the city. So in that regards, I feel this is an appropriate use of this property. It's going to develop. The question is at what time? And I feel that now is, is a good time for that. So in that regards, I do cast my vote in favor of the motion, unless that motion does pass with four in favor and three in opposition. With that, I stand for a motion to close this public hearing. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes. And so that moves us into the housekeeping item after that, is the bill and ordinance regarding the annexation. Do we have a sponsor of bill 68, ordinance 3629?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Doughty.
Sponsor bill number 68, ordinance number 3629, move for its passage by title only and approve the summary for publication.
Do we have a sec? So was motion from Counsel Doughty, second was Counsel Dittenberg, I believe? Is that correct? So that's for passage of bill 68, ordinance 3629, by title only and approve the summary for publication. Any discussion on that motion? With that, do we have that up for that one? And voting is open at this time? And all votes are cast. The voting is closed. And that motion passes with five in favor and one in opposition, Counsel Register. And that would move us into new business number three, and this is again a housekeeping item for annexation of the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District for bill 30, bill three, ordinance 3655, bill 24, ordinance 3676, bill 23, ordinance 3675, bill 22, ordinance 3674. Do we have a motion to adopt these bills and ordinances for this annexation in the Caldwell Municipal Irrigation District?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Allgood.
I will sponsor the bills that you just listed and move for their approval by title only.
Perfect. Do we have a second? Just a motion from Counsel Allgood and a second from Counsel Doughty. Any discussion on that motion? With that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that motion passes unanimously. And that'll move us into what was consent calendar number 14 and 15. So we'll start with 14. Approved resolution accepting a bid from Ferguson Water Works of the purchase of 11 16-inch valves for 10,000 water project to expand water pressure zone four in the amount of $89,000, as accommodated within the FY '25 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Item number 14 and 15 are regarding the water line construction that was referred to earlier in the meeting from, it's not from Mallard Park, it's from Verb, not Verbena, sorry. There's been a lot of talk. It's from Passero. The north side of Passero, they built a water line in 10th Avenue down just north of Mallard Park. And this section of water line that we're constructing is about a mile long, and it connects two parts of Zone 4 that are not currently connected. And so, so these are the fittings that are needed for that. I, I believe Counsel Manstodik had, had wanted to pull these off, just to understand a little better who pays for these projects, and I can, I can reiterate that if you'd like. To whatever extent you want me to explain anything, I'm happy to do so.
Do you mind just getting a really quick synopsis on, like, the cost, like, what does end up paying? I know obviously we pay for it, but that money does come back, just real quick.
So the, the project, the project is budgeted in 2025. It was approved in this budget that we approved this last year. It's, we budgeted a million dollars. We're actually expecting it to come in probably well under that. It's constructed by city forces. The water line, the pipeline itself was purchased probably two meetings ago, and it was piggybacked off of a different bid. And then these are the fittings and the valves, and the purpose of this project, of course, is to connect Zone 4 from one side to the other. And it's all part of, everything we do on the water system is all part of making our network more robust and more redundant. And so this is just one more step in that process. All of our capital improvement projects for the water system are paid for by the connection fees that developers pay when they build their, when they pull their permits.
Very good. Any additional questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, Rob. I, you know, the big concern I had is to make sure that the developers paid for this stuff and not, and taxpayers aren't stuck with it. So, thank you.
Okay. Very good. With that, do we have a motion?
Pulled it, Chuck. I can give it a go. Let me get my, where's my cheat sheet here? Or they're just consent items, aren't they? So, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we approve items 14 and 15 off the consent calendar, and they are resolutions regarding Zone 4 in the amount of $89,650, and Zone 4, 110,76720, as accommodated within the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Perfect. So it's a motion from Counsel Doughty, a second from Counsel Stoddick. Any discussion on those motions? With that, we probably need a roll call vote, correct? So Debbie, if you don't mind.
Doughty?
Yes.
Stoddick?
Yes.
Register?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Allgood?
Yes.
Dittenberg?
Yes.
Very good. So that motion passes unanimously, and that now moves us into the finance report.
You do it, does this mean, Chuck?
Yeah.
Counsel, they're all good.
I move that accounts payable. I'm a microphone. I move that accounts payable in the amount of $4,33,213.07, represented by check numbers 138811 through 184041, and electronic payments and payroll in the amount of $806,066.20, represented by check numbers 39820 through 39829, and direct deposits to be accepted, payments approved, and vouchers filed in the office of the city clerk.
Good. And a second?
Second.
Motion from Counsel Allgood and second from Counsel Stoddick for approval of the finance report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes. So that moves us into council comments. Counsel Doughty? So those were moved completely.
Okay, thank you. Counsel comments. I appreciate for sure all of our city staff, but. I appreciate all of our city staff, but our roads department did very well. I think they're always understaffed and not full up to the amount of employees that we allow for that. So we certainly appreciate our streets department being out there and working through the weather. They often get only those that complain, which is a small minority, but they sometimes can be the loudest, and so I appreciate that. And we're accepting applications, but I appreciate all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel Stoddick. Counsel Register?
Yes, I do. Actually, I want to talk a little bit about growth, because this keeps coming up, and the difference, in my opinion, between growth and responsible growth. We keep, I keep hearing over and over and over again, growth is going to happen, growth is going to happen. Like, you don't have any control on this council, and I'm just here to tell you that you do. And we have a responsibility to make sure that we can accommodate and sustain the growth. And like Counsel Allgood just said, on this project, we should have been sure and made sure, and been doubly sure that the infrastructure is going to make it there before we go approving it. And you, you all have the ability to say no and tell the developer that that kind of stuff has to be settled and done before you come back and bring it back, and then it's approved on. Or it's voted on, and then possibly approved. But by continuing to approve growth, just because it's going to come, and so we might as well, without making sure that these things are in place, that, to me, is irresponsible growth, and that's the difference, and I just kind of wanted to point that out. Also, I would really like to work with planning and zoning on putting together some kind of checklist that can be presented with the packets that can come to us. They can also be shown to the public, where we have something on there, like it says, this is how much we're going to receive in impact fees. If this is approved, this is how it impacts, this, how many doors are coming, this is how many cops we might have to hire to accommodate this, this is how many firemen we might have to hire to accommodate this. This is what's going to happen with the roads, and so that it's a very standard unified checklist, so that we can look at it, including, this is what the potential positive impact might be for property taxes to help along the city, all of these kinds of information that we should be looking at over elevations and designs and things like that that can be handled in a design agreement. We need to be looking at how it's going to affect the city. So I'm going to propose that. And then also, I would, I would like to talk to whoever, I don't know who would put this together, on researching whether or not the city can charge impact fee for, for schools. If that's something, how do we get on board with that? Mr. Dillon mentioned something about Kuna looking into that. Is that a state thing? Do we need to, how, what do we need to do, basically, to see about starting to look at something like that? And, and again, I'm going to ask again for an updated number of doors count, and probably, I think we should be getting that a little bit more often.
Thank you. Counsel Williams, Counsel Allgood?
Just briefly. I don't know why it was pulled off. Our, the discussion, well, the consent counter thing on Jesse Tree and the assistance it gives us in Caldwell. I, I receive updates from Ally Rab pretty regularly on what they're doing, and, and they're, they're doing amazing things in Caldwell. And, and unfortunately, we have a number of people that need support and, and are at risk of losing a home. And, and like I said, I don't know why it was pulled off. Maybe there's just some more clarification needs, but I, I just want to advocate, they do a wonderful job in Caldwell for, for our citizens.
And I think the gentleman to your left can clarify something about that. Counsel Dittenberg.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I asked for those two items to be pulled off, and for specifically, there's a couple of reasons that were minor reasons, but the main reason, and I've chatted with Robin about this, is I wanted to make sure that the city is protected, because these are federal funds, and there is a lot of uncertainty in the way that the new administration is rolling out cutbacks. And I just wanted to make sure that the city had the money that we could allocate to Jesse Tree. And I also wanted to make sure that the contract language was specific enough that in the event that the city does not get the federal funds, that we are not obligated to pay that $55,000 to, to Jesse Tree. And, and then there were some other minor things that I think, that I expressed to Robin, but for the most part, I just wanted to make sure the city's interest was protected, and wanted both of those pulled, just for that purpose specifically.
Anything else? Is that, okay. So I think the goal is to kind of get that figured out, bring it back as soon as possible on that.
Sorry, I have another question when they're done.
I think you are.
Can we address when the SRO contract's coming back?
So yes, I can touch on that as well. So I made a quick note. So your question on school impact fees, and we have no offense, but we have way too many attorneys in the room. So please correct me if you wish on this. It is not allowed by state code. It's very specific that you cannot charge impact fees for schools. So that would have to be legislative at the state in order to do that. And then in regards to your comments about the planning and zoning, having some of that additional information could be a good thing, but I think it's important that we realize that our PNC staff is already taxed on what they have to do. So if we do want, the council does want additional information, additional studies, I would highly recommend you also consider adding additional staff for planning and zoning. So obviously, when the budget does come up, that if you're wanting that additional work, it would be good to give them additional staff. So that way, it's not an unfunded mandate, you could say. So just providing that for them, I think, would be important. On that. And then in regards to the SRO contract, I know appreciated Travis Manning was here. He's a member of the Caldwell School Board. He'd emailed me earlier, so I was able to talk to him a little bit, because he had had some questions. I think there was some miscommunication on, on that end, so just want to make sure he knew that we have met. Chief Ingram and I met with Superintendent French a month ago, January 14th. I actually looked it up when I was talking with Mr. Manning. We met with her at that time to discuss it. There's concerns in regards to the armed security officers that are at Caldwell High School, and it's not just an easy fix. We want to check, make sure that everybody is comfortable, and it's an appropriate thing to do on that, and waiting to try to get that finalized before we brought it to council. So we'd have a much cleaner request for you in regards to that contract. So we did meet with her a month ago. We've been trying to meet again to discuss it further, some of those issues. And I know that their attorney and Mr. Hilty are going to talk, I think, on Friday, and unfortunately, it hasn't taken that long. And in the interim, they were notified by the state that they are going to lose that grant, which is very unfortunate, but we have been trying to meet with them to kind of come to some compromises, understanding on that. We just want to make sure, obviously, that the kids are safe, and to do that, we got, we have to make sure we're all on the same page. If there's people in there that are armed, carrying guns, and our police officers aren't really aware of who they may be, when they see a person with a gun, and they don't know who they are, they're going to think that they are on the wrong side of the team. And so we just want to make sure that those individuals are safe, and then also that could put kids in the crossfire. And so we just want to make sure that that's very clean. We haven't been able to get to that point yet, but that, again, meeting will be taking place Friday over the phone, and there'll be some additional follow-up with Chief Ingram, deputy chief, whoever else he wants in on that, and then the school district as well. But we just want it to have it clean, and where everybody feels comfortable, and we're not there yet, if I'm not mistaken. And Chief can, and he's nodding yes on that. So we just want to make sure that police feels comfortable with the contract and way it's laid out before we bring it to council on that. So try to get all those loose ends tied up.
Can I add to that?
Yes, go right ahead.
I also have an issue that I'll bring up when the time's appropriate about the head security guard there, and his criticism of this council, and his allowance on his personal page that allows people to criticize this council and talk about us being on the take like we've heard tonight. And though he may not say it directly, he certainly does not do anything to stop that type of rhetoric. So I also have that concern that the head security guard there is hypercritical of this council and, and the decisions we make, which would then maybe, if my children went there, would cause me some huge concern. So in addition to what you've already said, I don't need to reiterate that, but we also can't have a head security guard that questions how this council is operating and our ethics and criminal activity that he believes is occurring. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so that is all for that. So we would actually stand for a motion to go into executive session.
Ms. Mayor, I move, Counsel goes into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74-206, subsection 1F, for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, or where there is a general public awareness of probable litigation.
Very good. Do we have a second? It's motion from Counsel Stoddick and a second from Counsel Dittenberg. Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the rule?
Not at all. What? Stoddick?
Yes.
Register?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Allgood?
Yes.
Dittenberg?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We are going into executive session. I think everybody's already left, but if anybody's online still watching, thank you for attending. We appreciate you being here. And with that, we will end the online and go into executive session.